It's his first ever city council meeting. I know. It's a big deal.
And he's gonna speak.
What do you need to plug in back?
What do you want to?
HDMI.
Yeah.
There you go.
You gotta do that.
This doesn't hide your gestures. No, we just put it on. Your hair was under.
Did you take it up?
No, I was trying to get squirrels. Coming up though. This is the worst type of way I just took it. We gotta be proud of them.
Thank God.
These are games around football too. They're on Thursday. Are you ready Logan?
Sound like.
Okay, are you ready?
No. He's standing up.
Well, I had to walk over there so I sit back down.
Alright, I'll call me to order. Seven o'clock before they punch the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic where it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Alright, first up we have, we're gonna see some store windows. Alright, moving on. Next up we have the consent agenda. We've got minutes from September 13th. And September 21st. Everybody have any changes to the?
Not for me.
For me?
No.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconds from several halls in favor? Alright, thank you. Alright, next up we have the regular agenda. So, why don't we skip down and do everything but number one? Get back to that about 10 o'clock.
We'll be running in circles by then.
One more passed out on the floor.
So first up we have consideration for variance request for the garage door setback at 665 Woodcrest. And then Brittany, Brittany Bissinette and Logan are here.
Yes, we are.
Okay. So 665 Woodcrest everybody is the lot next to the one where we knocked the house down.
So it did. Wrong one. Can't change it. It's a high range melody.
So I didn't put the application in the packet, but she is requesting a variance from a 28 foot garage door setback. To 26 and a half.
It's a 26?
Yeah. Okay, good.
So I have it.
Is Brittany gonna speak?
Sure, you do.
I don't know, why does it sound like this? I wanna give you a chance to get up on the camera.
You just wanna embarrass me. You say good evening?
Yeah.
Good evening?
My name is Brittany Bissinette and we are looking to build our home on 655 Woodcrest. If you said, we are requesting a variance to do a garage door setback of 26 and a half feet instead of the 28. So that we could do a cement garage.
So Woodcrest is here. There's the garage.
So on Woodcrest, the house across the street is front entry. The house next to that is front entry. The house next door to the empty lot has a gravel driveway and no garage. Bill Graham next on the other side has a gravel driveway and no garage. So pretty much, almost every house on that street is non-conforming. So they're gonna be the first to actually have a side entry garage. And start conforming. 26 and a half feet, you know.
We're actually reviewing that number anyhow. I mean, if things go positively through the review, we're gonna move that down to 25 anyway.
Right, so my only concern, what I would do here is, they have 26 and a half feet from the property line to the doors. And actually what they're doing, the nice thing is that, I should point out. Our garage door, our garage size is 25 by 22. This is like 30 by 20. It's much bigger.
It gets 23 in depth and it's like 30 something with.
So three car garage instead of two.
Yes, yes.
So they're doing the right thing by making the garage the right size.
Right.
But by making the garage the right size, they can't get the swing. The only way they can get the swing is to make the garage smaller. And that doesn't. The only question I have with the 26 and a half is, I, 26 and a half takes to the property line.
Yeah, there's gonna.
So we should probably do 25. Or some.
No, where I was gonna go is that the driveway isn't gonna go out to the.
No, the driveway will not go to the property line.
But that 26 and a half feet that I see on there.
Oh, it's to the property line.
This 26 and a half feet is from the garage door. To the property line, it's 26 and a half.
To the setback.
So I think the driveway's gonna come in. Wait, what?
I'm sorry, I was just saying correct, that's correct.
And that includes the setback. That's the property line.
Correct.
So the driveway's gonna come in like this, and then it's gonna sweep out.
But it's gonna have to stay off.
Right, so she's asking to be 26 and a half feet, which includes all the way to property line.
But for the setback, not the driveway.
You're right.
The driveway is the problem, the setback.
The driveway is, okay, so the driveway.
The driveway to maintain the three feet off the setback is gonna be 23 feet.
Okay, we're good. You're right.
Which is also another problem.
I'm jumping the gun, but we'll wait till that. Where's the driveway gonna go Brittany?
We were thinking about doing 20, like wherever the garage is.
Yeah.
We were gonna do 25 there. See, in order to do a cement.
I'd like to make sure that we get just the right way now.
I know, that's kinda where I was going with this too.
I think the, do you have? I'm trying to look down, going through the plans here, see if the flat work's in there. Is the flat work in there?
I don't think so.
I don't think it is when I look, I don't remember seeing it.
Because, you know, so, do I understand?
You're wondering how far the concrete is from the property line.
Well, so, no, where I'm going is the variances for the building. And when they go and do the driveway, they're gonna come back and there's no problem with the driveway. So it's either fix it now and address, address those one now one trip. Or come back and all of a sudden now we're into, we're backed into a corner.
Does the setback seven feet off the side?
Yeah, so, so let's say that's 26 and a half feet. You, so the garage door is 26 and a half feet from the property line. Okay, that's fine. Now, there's seven feet where technically you're not supposed to put the driveway in that seven. We've been allowing that.
Right.
As long as you stay like two feet off the property line. So, she doesn't have the driveway dotted in there to show the driveway, but it's pretty obvious it's gonna be in that seven feet.
So, yeah, to me both, yeah, the garage to meet the zoning as it is, it would have to be 28. And the driveway would have to be seven feet off of that.
Right, which we know they're not gonna do.
So, but what I, what we haven't ever been taught is no more than, more than three feet from the property line. So a seven foot setback, they can encourage four feet.
Four feet, yes. So that's what I'm saying, why don't we, I would say we do two things. We can approve the 26 and a half feet from the property line. So the doors are in the right spot.
Right.
And then approve going four feet into the setback with flat work. So flat work the driveway, the concrete has to stay three feet off the property line.
You can follow that Brittany, you would have 26 feet from the door to the property line, but the driveway would be 22.
You can't put the concrete on the property line.
Oh, sorry.
I was imagining. So you have to be three feet from that.
Three feet from this one.
That's what they're saying. So from max lot. Is that enough? Is that a dumb question? Cause when we, I measured.
That means you're gonna be 23 and a half feet.
Of concrete.
Of concrete before you get to the door.
So a full size pickup is 20. So it's, it's tight.
Yeah.
That's why we're having a conversation now, so you don't build the house and you come back and go.
No, yeah, we're gonna put a half off, I didn't realize, I guess I didn't understand. That it had to be seven, I knew that it had to be seven on the side of the house. I thought that the only side requirement from this side of the house with the garage was that 28, but I didn't understand.
The setback or nothing is built from the setback, we allow the driveway to encroach.
Yeah.
But historically, we've only allowed it to encroach four feet at a seven foot setback. So that you basically end up with a three foot strip that never gets concrete building, or no concrete.
So what you can, so if there's two, we can grant two variances and we can grant one. And then you can design it, lay it out, see where you think the concrete's gonna go.
Yeah.
And then come back.
I would suggest approving one, giving her the opportunity to validate that that's what she wants to do. Only three feet off.
Or we can table it and come back and look at it as a whole. I mean, however you wanna go.
So Brittany, the location of the house.
Yeah.
That's what you're trying to pin down, so the house doesn't have, you know, you can build it where it lies.
Right.
Right? So the flat work is separate, your driveway.
Right.
So the question now is, you can put that house where you've got it drawn. You can put it where it lies. And we're gonna approve where it lies.
Okay.
Then putting your flat work in, you just have to bring the flat work in off the street and then we just curve it out.
Right.
And here, this, you know, this curving area. You'll have 25, 26 and a half, so you'll have 23 and a half feet.
Right.
To curve in. And we, that hasn't been a problem in the past.
The other side of the property line, they have to be seven feet from that property? Which we, we're on. But you said you give variances for three, so what if they just shift the house?
The house can't be seven.
The building does not go into it, we give variances for concrete.
And obviously I'm assuming that there's no way of giving one and a half instead of a three. Like I can't ask.
Well, you could, you could come back after we, after we, after we change it.
Yeah.
You have the architect put in the flat work.
Okay.
So the, the.
You can move ahead with the house, you're not gonna move the house, right?
So what's problematic about coming back and asking for one and a half is we've always stuck to three for everybody else. And now it's, we're kind of a present itself.
Right. Okay.
So however you wanna move forward, like you said, we can table it, treat it as one, we can approve this one tonight.
No, I would just approve it, yeah.
It gets you going, then you have, you'll have to come back with.
Yeah, just equal. Cause I don't think, I mean, there's no other, I mean, if I put the house in, there's no other option. Right, you know what I mean? Like I don't have.
In case of, yeah.
Usually like you're, I mean, me tailing it doesn't really make sense to me because it's.
You're stuck, right, but.
No, but for instance, I'm just, not to confuse you.
Yeah.
I think you should talk with, you should talk with Chris.
Yeah.
Find out, because you, that garage is 23 feet deep, right?
Yeah.
You can make the garage, you know, 22 feet deep or something.
Right.
And gain another foot.
Right.
There's some trade offs, you might, what's more important to you? For a normal car, having 23 and a half, 24 feet to turn left in, there's plenty of room.
For a pickup truck?
For a normal car.
Yeah, he has a pickup truck.
For, that's where you, I would, I would try and see what you need.
Okay. Alright, I'll just creep on some people's houses and see how wide their driveways are for.
Well, you know, Rusty had that problem, right?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know. That's my concern. Yeah, okay then, yeah, um. Then I guess we'll table that one. I'll come back.
Well, we can, we can, I think we can grant you the 26 and a half, right?
Wait, wait, I'm comfortable granting the garage, but I don't wanna grant anything without a drawing for the flat work. And not to, not to get us about this scenario, but that concrete still remains an issue when people, I mean, we're talking later tonight about concrete work people did without coming to a.
I think that's fair. Liz?
No, I think, you know, it's up to you whether you wanna go back and like mayor said, you know, make your garage a little bit, I guess, smaller. To give you more space for your driveway, but at least you have something already approved and it's up to you if you wanna modify your plans.
The thing is we only meet once a month, you'd have to wait another month.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, why don't we approve, well, why don't we, why don't one of you guys make a motion to approve the 26 and a half feet?
I have a motion that we prefer the garage to be allowed to be 26 and a half feet off the property line. The garage only not the property line.
The garage, correct, okay. I have a motion.
I'm motion, I second.
Second, okay, I've got a motion and a second. Alright, all's in favor? Thank you. Alright, so Brittany, what you asked for is approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye Logan.
Bye.
Okay. Alright, next up. Discussing TCQ wastewater plant inspection results. I thought this would be, I thought this would be good to give everybody. We, I don't think we've ever done this before, so I figured we'd give everybody a shot at this. So what it is, is about every five years, we have our, every three to five years, it's kind of somewhere in the middle, sometimes three, sometimes five. Uh, we get a wastewater plant inspection and we get our sewer. I'm sorry, we get the water plant, we get them both inspected. So this was our most, this was our latest inspection, it came in August 30th. So as we go through, basically what they found, they did the sewer plant. Our sewer plant has come a long way. From the past, normally on wastewater plant in the town's history in the far distant past, there were a lot of violations of the monitoring. We were out of bounds, we were putting stuff in the lake that wasn't, you know, it wasn't being operated correctly. There weren't problems with the equipment, it was literally that the wastewater plant wasn't even run properly.
Is that just cause they didn't turn all the knobs and dials?
Exactly, they didn't waste the thing the right way, they didn't coordinate it right, they didn't, this was a previous operator, not the current. So we switched operators five or six years ago to Patterson. And we've had no violations since then of any substance. So this was the actual report that we got, just to kinda go through it. So what they do is that the, so they give you an, they give you the report, you get it. And then basically what happens is, you have 30 or 60 days to correct anything real fast. And then they'll double check it and verify real fast that's corrected. It's kinda like when it almost didn't happen. Because, you know, you didn't have that, oh wait, hold on, it's in the other room, we get it, now you got it. So there's a quick repair thing, and then there's kind of the longer ones, where you're violating three years ago, you still haven't fixed it. So our goal is to get these technical violations fixed as fast as possible, which we've already all fixed, but. Okay, so, just to go through them real quickly, this first one here was a, very operative. So basically it was, there was the weir ring, which is the ring around the clarifier, it's a steel ring, and it had become corroded. So in the five years since we had our last inspection, it's a very corrosive environment, the wastewater plant. So we have gone ahead and fixed that, we actually rebalanced it and welded new parts on that, and that's been fixed. And TCQ has already given us the approval from Patterson that they accept that it's been fixed. So that one was done immediately. They gauged wastewater flow meter, and we were measuring .1037 and they measured .139. And so, they said had to be calibrated, and it was calibrated the same day. So the flow meter was calibrated. So again, that was a minor.
Patterson did that.
Patterson did that, yeah. So once every year, or once every two years, we actually have to have the sonic system calibrated, but the pace somebody couldn't calibrate. So that was the calibration, that was immediately fixed. As everybody knows by now, the lift stations now have the audio alarms, they make noise. Before we had disconnected those many, many, many years ago. So they told us we had, they were on the same day, they were on a matter of hours after this report, they're already on. They're connected and they're operating as we all know, so those are good there.
Is it only audio, or do we have the flashing red light too?
Uh, we have a flashing red light and we have the audio beep beep beep.
Yeah, I think it's always been there, so it's just switched off.
Yeah, we never really had the audio alarm on there.
It was worked by the light.
We just hope I was strong. But again, automatically we showed that it was connected and so that's good there. Uh, the fourth one here dealt with a, there were a couple of grabs from 2013, 2017, and I think 2017 again. So basically what that means is that all of our reporting is on monthly averages. So what they do is they go out there and they measure the chlorine every day. You know, what they have to report to TCQ is the monthly average. And every week they do a test on the solids at the sewer plant, and then they average for the month and report the one number. So this is just saying that FYI, a couple of the individual numbers in the last five years, three times, the individual number was out of bounds. But that's not a violation, cause the average wasn't out of bounds. And that will happen to us periodically when we get a ton of rain. Cause the sewer plant, it can't process. Cause, not to go into too much detail, but you know wastewater has to have the bugs eating. It has to work through the system. If we're getting 100,000 gallons of rainwater, it's gravity fed, it's going through the system faster than it should. And so it's not unusual to have a single reading be out of bounds. I'm actually surprised with only three in five years that individual out of bounds. But there's no big deal, and again, it says that was already been, that's already been approved by TCQ. The last couple of things were things I wanted to bring up because we may do this later on. We have a bar screen that is not very useful, and there are better ways of doing that. It's basically a pre-treatment. You keep things out of the sewer plant. And there's some really cool stuff, there are cones. They're actually a cone, so it's a spiral. And so as the effluent comes in, the cone spirals it, and it actually drops it in the garbage can. So that stuff stays out of the wastewater plant.
Like branches and things like that?
It's plastic products and different kinds of stringy things.
Flushed or things that are too thick.
Right now they process through the plant and they sink to the bottom, and then every so many years you have to vacuum out the plant. But they're pointing out that the bar screen that we have is kinda wide. There's not a violation, it's just an FYI, you know, hey, it's not, you know, and it's not, they're the prettiest thing.
It's a screen, it needs to be a straighter.
Yeah. And the last thing was that, we're supposed to have a log book down at the wastewater plant. And we have log sheets with all the readings, but they didn't consider that to be a log book. Because it didn't have a couple more columns that say like visually inspected the plant. Instead it was, here's the power meter, here's the pH, here's the flow for, you know, for the day, it was all parameters. But it didn't say, you know, like, you know, inspected the bar screen, you know, and so Patterson changed the form now. And they said that's fine, they accepted it. So all of the corrections have been corrected, we are, we have no violations. Everything was immediately corrected, so, so we're in good shape. Sewer plant looks, uh, looks to be really good shape. Okay? Any questions? I thought nobody's, we've never really gone over the inspection reports ever, I just thought I'd let you see what it looks like. And this is what a TCQ inspection is.
So next time we'll see, maybe it'll be five years down the road?
Usually it's five, sometimes it's three, they kind of, when we get it back, it's minimum, it's three to five.
They don't, they only inspect it.
They do the water and sewer separate.
And you kind of put in context, there's always, they always find something.
Exactly, they.
Well, no, it's not that, I mean, there's just, when the highs are on it, there's always, I mean, there's always on it daily, and then just like somebody else has a different perspective on it, says, hey, you know, your weir's broad. No, shoot, it is.
But the plant looks, you know, there's things that we, you know, the new motors are there, you guys obviously don't go down there, it's much quieter. It's much, much quieter than it used to be, which is nice.
It's related.
Yeah, it's very quiet. Okay, so that's the inspection report. Alright, next up is, I wanna talk a little bit about some drainage improvements. Clint, could you pull up on OneDrive the pictures? So this is, so I pointed, I just made a couple of pictures, everybody can see. Everybody know where this is? You know where this is?
Yeah, Shoreline down here.
This is Shoreline, that's Jeremy Oliver, so that's his driveway. And he's got a huge driveway that's got eight tons of concrete in it with a little tiny culvert in it.
Yeah, and that's a big hitch on that other side.
It's about a third the size, and so what happens is, all the water coming, you know, down lake crest, everything, it hits here, it cannot get under his driveway. So it rolls across the street, and after a big rain, you'll see branches and leaves and everything on Shoreline, that it, it can't make it under Jeremy's driveway. His driveway culvert's like 12 inches. Needs to be about a four foot box culvert. And then right here is where it goes under the street. Is right up here, not quite at the intersection. That's doing okay, but, you know, when we did the road, we put, replaced that culvert. But this is an example of something where at some point, we're gonna have to blow up Jeremy's driveway. And, you know, if you think about the ground, a circle is incredibly inefficient. Cause only the bottom is touching the ground.
Right.
Right, for moving water, they typically use box culverts. So we will probably take the culvert, the tin horn, the round guy out of it, and just reform this in concrete into a box under his driveway. But that's something that's coming. But that's an example of one of the drainage improvements that because the road collects the water so well. It really transports the water around this corner and it's got nowhere to go. My concern about it is I don't want it to undermine the street. We don't wanna wash out, we don't like having water rushing over the tops of the street, that's totally not good. Clint, could you go to the next picture please? Now this one, Serena should know where this is. This is Lake Batchelder. This is directly across the street from Serena. This is the Batchelder's house, this is their front yard. That's our lift station, Malone Island is our lift station. So back there, this, this lot used to be a swamp, this was very low lying ground, it was one of the last lots to get built on. And here, it's always been low. But this is an example, when we do the roads, we've gotta fix this. And it's cause the water can't get under the street.
Yeah, it's trying to get over here.
It's trying to get over here into a big box culvert that goes over on Serena's property. But you can see, this is just, you know.
It's a natural pool.
It's, it's a lake. So that's where we do the concrete runs, that's an example of one where we fix it.
Right.
There's no point in fixing it today because there's nothing to fix. This is a more imminent one that we're getting ready to work on now, so these next two are, this is the next drainage improvement's gonna start soon. This is the new house that Emmanuel put in on the corner of Peninsula. So Clint, could you go to the next slide? Thank you. This is, he put in a walkway, which is now the Emmanuel dam. And so, all, so what happens is, the water coming down on hillside, so in your front cross street from you Liz. It used to come down hillside and go straight, under the street, and go into people's yard and go to the lake. But there's no drainage even still, the town just kinda aimed it at their house. When we put in the road, we got rid of that, cause you can't, you can't just shoot water at somebody's house. So that means the water going on hillside doesn't 180. It actually goes back around the corner, heads back around in front of Emmanuel's house, and heads down toward the main, uh, toward the Hunts. And then it goes into the lake over here, right about here is where it goes in the lake. Well, Emmanuel put in these steps and he dammed it up. He's got a culvert at the bottom of this, which has got about the top one inch. Rest of it's underground.
Yeah, cause he covered it up with sod.
He covered it up, and so this is getting.
Didn't know he was doing a mess, he forget it.
This is gonna get blown up, so this is going away. He's not, his CO has been held up, he's not got a certificate of occupancy. Drainage is required under certificate of occupancy, and this is a failure. So he's, he's got to fix this. We're working with him, we've got a solution, it's on his nickel. But we will get this fixed. Now you can see it meandering down here to get to the driveway, and that was the previous one. So can we go back to the last one Clint? Three? So, this driveway right here, this culvert is higher than this one. This driveway, we're gonna have to blow it up. This has a tree in the middle of the culvert. So this driveway, the meter box is right about there in the center of the driveway, they put it dead center. And this is the one we've had problems with, where we couldn't read their meters. Can't read their water meter because it's in the middle of driveway and it's upside down.
This is the same spot, right?
So this is, this is his driveway, where his thing was right about there, isn't it? So this is, this is his driveway, where his thing was right about there, this one. So what we have to do right now, which is gonna happen the next month or two, probably the next month, this is gonna turn into a bigger culvert, this driveway is gonna get taken out and put back, just the approach. The trees that are right here that you can't see are in the barge ditch.
Yeah, I see them.
Those trees are gonna, before I talked to the owner, they know the trees are gone, and then the next driveway up, that driveway's gonna be taken out, again, the approach, a new culvert put into that one, it's much bigger, to allow this water, right now, this water can't go anywhere. So if we fix Emmanuel, it's gonna get hung here. So that's the drainage improvement that's gonna happen in the next couple of weeks. And that's just kind of an example of, we're fixing some of these things that we inherited. That's just the way it goes, and the road is much more efficient moving water now, rather than just being held or skeltered. So the concrete drains have this unintended consequence that we've gotta go back and fix some of these things that should've been fixed when they were put in the first time. So anyway, that's an example, that's why you see kind of what's on the, on the horizon. I do not think we're gonna do this, I think Jeremy, the sheriff where it's stuck, that one and this one, I think are it, we're done with this side of town. I think we'll be done. We, we can't make it perfect, it doesn't rain that much here, famous last words, but, you know, it's.
It's fifteen all over again.
The good thing about it, let me close with this, is, to best of my knowledge, in all the time I've been here, I, I don't recall anyone coming in and complaining to the city that water's going in their house. So it hasn't reached the stage where we've got a drainage problem because it's literally going into houses. It's not, it's crossing the street, we're getting overflowed, and we could live with it, but, let me just fix it.